All right, the time is six P M. I'll call to order, call to order this meeting of the Liquor Control Board. Uh, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Deputy Mayor Bernard Oakley.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. We have our consent agenda item, discussion approval specs. Um Jenny, please go over the item list, thank you.
So staff has no concerns, um it's just pending a follow-up inspection, life safety inspection.
Perfect, any questions from council?
No.
No.
No, all right, in that case, I'll seek a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Perfect, that passes, thank you Jenny. All right, the time is six oh one P M, I'll now call to order the Winuski City Council meeting. Uh, we will start with the agenda review. Um, I have one item that I would like to move, which is um the assessors errors and omissions agenda item. If we could put that ahead of budget, um so that would be, it would become regular item C. And the budget would become regular item D.
Great.
That works.
No problem, yep.
Perfect. Elaine, I forget, do I, do we have to vote on that? Okay, um in that case, I would request a motion to make that change.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Perfect. All right, any other um items on the agenda?
No.
Perfect, all right, we will now move into public comment. Uh, this time is for anybody who has a comment on something that is not on the agenda. If you have a comment for something on the agenda, if you would just wait until that item, and then we will request public comment uh for the individual items on the agenda. Anybody in the room? No, is there anyone on Zoom? All right, seeing no public comment on Zoom. And just a reminder to the folks on Zoom, you'll just raise your hand if you did have a public comment. Okay. In that case, we'll move on to our consent agenda. So for our consent agenda, we have liquor, liquor control board meeting minutes from December one, accounts payable warrant December third, subsequent to payout warrant September twenty twenty five, an update from Winuski's Commissioner to the Burlington Airport Board of Commissioners, development review board appointments, um approved guarantee of indemnification agreement, uh except state infrastructure bank loan for improvements related to Abnaki Garage, Winuski City Council legislative priorities, and the corrected treasures report from November third. Any concerns with the consent agenda?
None.
Nope.
All right, I'll seek a motion then to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, we'll move on to council reports, uh Al, would you like to start?
I mentioned this last week, but again, we have a safe, healthy, and connected people meeting tomorrow at five thirty in the community room at the Myers Pool.
Thank you very much, Alcee.
Uh, the Housing Commission will meet next, uh will meet on Tuesday, September sixth, uh December sixteenth at six P M. to discuss potential changes to the construction and rehabilitation program.
Wonderful, thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Sure, uh, the Infrastructure Commission will meet on December eighteenth at a regular time and location, six thirty P M. at the Community Room at the Myers Memorial Pool. The agenda has not been set yet, but notice will go out soon.
And Aurora.
All right, I also mentioned this last time, so on December seventeenth, we have the next Inclusion and Belonging Commission meeting. Um, we do now have an agenda set. We'll be discussing a working group for putting up banners on Main Street, discussing the comprehensive work plan and planning strategy, um and discussing drafting some group norms for the commission.
Wonderful, thank you. None of my commissions have met uh since we last met, they will be meeting this week. Um, and I do just want to congratulate our former mayor Christine Lott, uh she had her baby last week. Um, they're very excited with a new baby boy at home, so just passing along congratulations. And if you see her out and about, uh pass her congratulations as well. All right, uh city updates.
Yes, city updates for today includes the fiscal year twenty twenty seven budget process continues tonight. Please stick around for the public safety presentation. We'll hear from the fire and police chiefs and other police department members uh to learn more about their respective departments, code enforcement and more. To view the full proposed budget and all upcoming meetings, please visit winuski V T dot gov slash F Y twenty seven. That's F as in fiscal. Speaking of public safety, the Operation Fire Cuffs Toy Drive has begun. This cherished local tradition unites neighboring public safety agencies to bring toys and joy to children at the Galasano Children's Hospital at U V M Health. Donations can be provided at the Winuski Fire and Police Departments. For donation specifics, including what might be welcome by way of gift types, uh you can visit the news update section at winuski V T dot gov.
Wonderful, thank you. So we'll move on to our regular items, uh so the first item we have is a public hearing on ordinance update chapter sixteen point twelve A Parks and Recreation. This was related to horseback riding, uh Ray.
Thank you, thank you, so yeah, we discussed this back on November third um in quite a bit of detail. Did try to do a little bit of homework in the interim, unfortunately, I think one of the big questions, which was around the wetland delineation, um in talking to the state, the timing, um we were not going to be able to do that until the spring. They use a lot of the um plants when they're leafed out to determine uh where the wetland extent is. And so we had kind of missed that window um already. So I will say one thing that Doug, uh Nettie, the hotel developer who's here tonight, um was able to provide is a partial delineation that was done as part of the hotel project. So while that doesn't kind of reflect the potential project area we're talking about, I think what's encouraging is that it does, the, the uh delineation that was done in twenty twenty four largely mirrors the one that was done back in two, uh twenty twelve. So while I can't say for sure that the line hasn't moved, I think um it shows me for the most part that that line has stayed pretty true over those, those thirteen years. So we will want to do a delineation again in the spring um to determine whether the wetland does kind of come into or the buffer into the meadow. But I think, feeling pretty optimistic that that won't be the case for us. Um, and that'll be on the work plan certainly once the weather warms up for us. Um, I think tonight really what we're looking for is um a change to the ordinance, which really, as I said last time, gives us an option. It does not commit us to offering this type of activity in the city. It doesn't um say we are definitively going to um offer this type of activity in the city, but it gives us the option to start looking at a permitting process more formally and moving forward um on the trail development side of things, which I think is another precursor that we felt pretty strongly, we want to build up the stability of that trail area before we allow um the horse carriages and sleighs. So the ask tonight really is around that um, you know, very slight update to the ordinance language to give the option. And then from there, that'll kind of signal the staff to really dive in and work on a permitting process and, and begin queuing up delineation work in the spring. So happy to answer questions or, um I know Doug is here as well.
Yeah, um, the main question I had was around that delineation, but to your point, um, if for some reason it isn't feasible with the wetlands, then permits just wouldn't be approved.
Correct, or we would adjust to the, the location and, and work around the areas we need to work around if need be.
Gotcha, so just really giving that option.
Yep.
Any other questions?
No. So, um, I think one of my other questions I had, and it is more project specific, so um, you know, we were interested on one hand about wetlands, but also about the area being in a floodplain and the feasibility of um a structure being within that floodplain for a dog park. Did you happen to get any answers?
So dog park wise, no, I think the, we, Doug and Robin and I, uh Robin, Mayor, our Parks Director, um, met last week out there and looked at a few potential locations for the dog park, but we've not sort of taken that next step there. I think we would need to really look at the flood map and the wetland map and see. We've really been focused on this trail development project within the meadow and kind of, I think the dog park in a lot of ways is a separate project. I know that there is, it's related in that there's off-leash dog activity that that would hopefully help curtail, but I think those are really two different projects in my mind as we're talking about it. So um, in relation to the trail project, the flood hazard area, when I looked at it a couple of months back with our local person on the A and R Atlas, it looks like the extent of that flood hazard area comes sort of right up to the edge of the meadow. So I think we'd be okay there based on the current mapping. Um, I wasn't at that time looking at potential dog park locations, so I didn't kind of look at through that lens at the moment. Um, and we're thinking kind of outside the outskirts of the meadow would be where the dog park would likely live um if we were to go that route.
Yeah, I can understand from your operational perspective why we, you would separate the two. I think from a policy and you use um managing uses and competing interests.
Yep.
To me, that feels like the average person would not really find them as distinct.
Sure.
And separate projects, so I think that's why I'm particularly interested in, is it even feasible? And if we had any
Right.
insights into whether or not we would be able to successfully permit a dog park
Yeah, I think
down in the, in that area.
Yeah, I think the, the flood mapping in some ways is a little easier to answer that question from because it's, it doesn't move around a lot. I think the wetland delineation is honestly more what I would be concerned about as it relates to putting, you know, fence posts in or needing to clear trees or whatever it is we might be doing. And I think we wouldn't know that until we can do a delineation in the spring. Um, my thought is we'll try to do as much of that area as we can so that we've got that information to work from. Okay.
I don't know if you have more questions. I do just want to make sure that we're making sure we are hearing from the public during this portion. If they do have any items that they'd like to bring up on this topic, uh so anybody in the room? All right, I just want to check with folks online. Again, if you just use the raise hand feature, we can bring you over so that we can hear uh your comment on this uh public hearing. All right, not seeing anybody raise hand on Zoom or in the room. Um, I'll move us on to the next section and we can ask more questions, all right. Um, so the time is six twelve, I will seek for a motion to close this public hearing uh on ordinance update chapter sixteen point twelve A.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Perfect, thank you. All right, so now the discussion or approval uh to adopt the amendments to chapter sixteen point twelve A. Counsel, continue your question.
Thank you, so follow-up question. Um, since we, I would benefit from a refresher, but also with new counselors. Um, can you provide a reminder as to why this step is needed now in order to receive the signal that you need from council to prioritize this?
Sure, I mean, I think just very plainly, right now, our ordinance prohibits horse-related activity period in the city. And so I think that developing a permit for an activity that's currently prohibited doesn't necessarily feel like great use of staff time. Um, and so I think by getting the signal through the ordinance change from council that this is something that there is a willingness to consider down the road, then says to me, okay, this is worth putting more staff time into. Um, you know, again, and right now, even if we develop a permit process and did a delineation and everything looked great, the ordinance says no. And so the change here really again just gives us that option down the road to, to approve things um in the future. So it's, it's really just trying to prioritize staff time towards a project that feels like it's got legs versus maybe doesn't. If that makes sense.
Yeah.
I'm always intrigued by order of operations, so.
Yeah, no, absolutely, absolutely.
Um, any questions from any of you? Um, Doug, I don't know if you'd be willing to come up? Um, I unfortunately wasn't at the first meeting where we talked about this. So apologies if you've already been asked these questions and answered them.
Sure.
But would just love to know more of your vision of what this is going to look like um and also how you see interacting with Winuski residents, not just folks who are staying at the hotel.
Sure, so my, my vision is to offer um uh horse-drawn sleigh rides um during the winter. You know, this weekend would be a perfect example where we'd have farmer bring their draft horses and sleigh on Saturday and Sunday. And that, it would be open to, you know, the residents of Winuski and also I've been speaking to um Melissa um at the Downtown Association, maybe we do jointly with them. But I think it's really just an opportunity to kind of elevate um something special about Winuski that they can do for the residences, for the businesses and uh, and um, you know, I think I, I, so I just see it be, being a, a plus amenity um for the city to offer. Um, so I see sleigh rides during the winter, maybe we pick six weekends or so depending on snow. I mean, this weekend would be perfect um coming up. And then we, we might pick maybe three weekends during the summer and a couple of weekends during the, the uh, the fall for foliage. Um, so it's, it's really going to be based on if there's interest in people in, in our community to take these sleigh and carriage rides and um, yeah, but I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm developing this hotel to do something, you know, to be different. You know, with the rooftop, you know, bar and restaurant and uh, you know, you know, the environmental aspects to it. Um, it's, it's going to be a unique hotel and I'm looking to create some other kind of energy and uniqueness to offer um, um, the city. And I think, I think this is kind of interesting.
Yeah.
I would be interested, you know, book something with my family for the, over the weekend, our holiday.
Awesome, well, thank you for that.
I think one other, just to say, and we talked about this when we walked through um last week, I think one other sort of public amenity piece to consider beyond the carriage rides is just the improvements to the trail that would come along with this. So I think that's another piece to mention here that, you know, currently, we don't have an accessible means of getting folks into that meadow in Casamante. Um, even off the end of the Riverwalk, that stretch is not currently, from a technical perspective, compliant from an E D A um lens. So I think by having an extension of the um, the boardwalk that's going to be going in, which is part of the, the hotel project anyway, we would then have an accessible means of getting folks down into that park um in a way that we have not had in the past.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know if you've seen plans and we can share them with you, but we're really creating a really quite unique, beautiful hundred and forty-foot um piled wooden bridge that crosses the uh wetlands into the park. It's really going to be ver, uh quite a grand entrance. And um, you know, it's going to be great for people walking, biking, and it's going to be handicap accessible. Um, so I think it's, I think what we're doing is really quite unique. It's going to really um help people get access into the park for a lot of different uses.
Yeah, awesome. Any questions for Doug?
No.
No.
No?
I had some questions, but it's more around um the health and wellness and um management of the horses, some questions from the public that have been relayed to me. Um, you know, how would they be staged? I think it's, um, there's uh, the, the, some of the experiences or historic um experience of the horses in New York City have some um native associations. So I think there's some um concern about the health and wellness of the, of the horses. Um, you know, what, you know, for, for someone that doesn't really know much about that, how, how would that be managed?
Um, sure, so I own two draft horses myself, so I'm quite sensitive in terms of how these animals are treated. But it's, it's no different than how, I'll, I'll share how Shellburn Farms does it, or Traps Family Lodge, or any other um uh resorts or areas that do it. They would, they, they hire a farmer who has draft horses and a sleigh and a buggy. And they, they trailer the, the horses in during the day, maybe they arrive at noon. And then the horses um will basically give rides through the next five or six hours. And then they bring them in a trailer and bring them back to their, to their barn and care for them there. It's, it's um, it's, it's done, you know, it's done quite ti, you know, typically throughout Vermont for different um events. And um, so I think the horses are well taken care of, the ones I've seen are.
And I, I think too, we would certainly plan through the permitting development process to have that be some of the kind of information we'd be asking of, of potential users too. I think we really want to have a sense of what the experience is going to be, not only for the, the folks riding in the sleigh, but the animals as well.
Okay.
So I think that's information we'd ask a prospective permutee to provide upfront.
Wonderful, thank you.
That sounds great. All right, in that case, I will uh seek a motion to approve the amendments to chapter sixteen of the municipal ordinances as presented and direct staff to bring the horse permit back to council for approval before implementation.
So moved, seconded.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Perfect, that passes, thank you.
Thank you. I, I spoke to Elaine briefly before the meeting about trying to get a tour of the council um to the hotel at some point, and I don't know how that, you know, when that would work for the group. But um, there's quite a bit to see there right now. And we've got our model rooms, we're finishing up one or two um temporary model rooms, so uh, so I'll just leave it to Elaine to schedule it, but I'm looking forward to sharing to all of you what we're doing because I think it's quite exciting.
We've, we've seen a lot of work, so it'd be cool to see what's inside.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so our new item C, um, grand list errors and omissions.
Yep, so, give me a second, Ted, you'll give me a minute here.
Sure.
Whoops, that's not it. Thanks Doug. So when real or personal property estate is uh omitted from the grand list by mistake or an obvious error is found in the grand list uh by an action of the city's assessor, uh the, with approval from council, the assessor before December thirty first may supply such omissions or correct such errors. So we've uh provided a list of entries that Ted's, here are the city assessor that will explain, um, he'll explain these to you. And then you can consider whether or not to approve these, there's, I'll, I'll have a comment at, um, at the end about one of these.
Okay.
Go ahead Ted.
Thank you very much, uh Elaine and, and Mayor Council, and I appreciate the chiefs and officers there. Uh, let us put this uh before public safety. Uh, obviously to me, it's much more important, but I, in general, I understand it. Wouldn't be as, anywhere near as important, but um, this is uh essentially uh an annual housekeeping thing. We, we try to, uh, we've tried over the years to eliminate the need for it, but uh ultimately, there are uh different reasons why uh a few of these properties need to be uh changed. And, and only the city council can do that after um the grand list is lodged and grievances are concluded. So uh, we believe that most of these are self-explanatory. Um, the, the one that Elaine is going to speak to you about um may not be actually an error of omission, but rather a payment issue. Uh, and, and that's something that uh Casella Waste Management reported twice and the, and we um put uh quite a bit more value on it based upon their initial reporting. And that's the one um that you could consider, but the others are um, again, straightforward from my perspective that uh they, they need a correction by the city council. Um, I don't, you know, you folks can read, I don't want to go through and read each one of these, but I, I am, I do have backup information with me and am prepared to answer any questions or, or field comments that you may have, thank you.
All right, I will open up to questions from council.
I think it would be helpful to just um for Elaine or yourself Ted to go over how frequently these come up and the commonality of these for Winuski as well as other municipalities.
Okay, uh, I'd be happy to, to address that. Um, errors and omissions, again, hopefully would, would not come up at all, but uh unfortunately, they do. Uh, and each one of these has a slightly different reason why um we recommend that you approve them. Um, for example, I'll take the easiest one, for example, which is uh parcel number P P two oh seven dash seven, L and N Consulting. We heard from them after the grand list was lodged, that they no longer have a consulting business in Winuski. So their value of thirty-four hundred dollars or the um, you know, I think you have a spreadsheet that shows the fiscal impact, but the, the, if you take one percent of that times the municipal tax rate, the, the eighty or a hundred dollars that they would be paying uh should be forgiven or taken off of dividends. So that's, that's the easiest and most straightforward example. Um, the most unusual one is probably Burlington Housing Authority. The two properties on St. Allen Street where uh the next item on the top of the second page where um they actually were volunteering to voluntarily paying property taxes. And advised us um that they no longer wished to do that. And Elaine and city attorney had uh much more in-depth conversation with staff from the Burlington Housing Authority, um, but they came to the conclusion that they have every uh right to just cease that practice. And so um, although significant in value, if you add the two together, um, that is quite unusual for us to have someone be, be paying and then elect not to pay. Uh, but that's the case there. So I, I think that's sort of the summary. Um, maybe Elaine wants to go into more detail on that or on the one that probably should be debated as opposed to um changes in air emission, that's Casella. Does that help?
I'll admit, I had a hard time hearing, but I think Thomas was nodding enough that we'll take it as a yes.
Okay, well, I'll comment on the Casella and then Ted, I would invite you to comment on how common these are in other communities. You certainly work in plenty of them, so. So for the regards to the Casella one, because it wasn't our error, and I didn't, I should have caught this before. I put the packet out, but I didn't, so Ted was uh reminded me today. This is not actually an error of the cities, and so it, it doesn't make sense to put them through this process. It would make more sense for them to be able to go to the Board of Abatement and request the change. They have been paying based on the current evaluation.
Hmm.
So that's the proper procedure. Um, and I, I still would not, I would expect that the Board of Abatement would grant that. Um, but uh, yeah, so I still wouldn't expect us to get the revenue that we're getting now. But it's just by procedure, it would make more sense for them to go to the Board of Abatement as opposed to council taking is, this is an error because it isn't our error, which is what the procedure is designed for.
Gotcha, so you're suggesting moving forward with the other ones, but specifically leaving this one out?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm not more clearly understood. Uh, I'll slow down a little and try to be more articulate in my speech. Um, this is more common in the other communities in my experience with the personal property than with the real estate accounts. The personal property accounts are the majority of the uh items in front of you this evening. And it, it is um more typical to have an error of omission where someone uh just wakes up after they get their tax bill and says, we no longer have a business in the community. Again, that's like L and N Consulting or the Vermont Dental Care Program, which uh we found uh is exempt. And um, so two of the uh six items are, are very similar in other communities. And um, uh, so it does happen. We try to avoid it by being careful with all of the real estate or anything that we can with personal property. But if the information arises after the grand list is lodged and grievances have been closed, the only choice we have is to go to the legislative body and ask for your approval.
Okay, thank you, that was really helpful.
Did, I, I know that Burlington Housing Authority has had um some financial problems under the current administration, so I'm assuming that's why they're changing this process.
Yeah, that's what they explained, yeah.
Did
Also, the current executive director apparently does not believe in pilots, so it was not a matter of like, well, maybe we could get to an agreement.
Okay, that was going to be my question, if there's a possibility of getting back to some form, okay, thanks Elaine. Any other questions? Any questions from the public? Anyone online? All right, um, let's see, no questions? I'll seek a motion to approve the manifest errors in the twenty twenty five grand list as presented, removing the Casella Waste Management line per the city manager's notes about the way the error was found, the way the error actually came in.
You could just say you're denying that one.
Okay, sure. So, denying Casella Waste Management.
So moved, seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, perfect. Thank you very much Ted.
Thank you folks very much, Elaine, and again, the chiefs and officers. Thank you.
All right, so our new item D, fiscal year twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven, public safety budget presentations. Chiefs?
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's a little rough being in the back right by the speaker, so.
I told you all to move on.
I didn't mean to make it so you couldn't hear, but it's a rough.
It was just a little muffled for me.
Yeah, it's all for good reason. So, good evening. Brought with me tonight Fire Marshal John Spittle. And I just would like to just start with, this is my tenth budget, so it's been quite a journey that we've all done together. This is not my fire department, this is this community's fire department. And I just want to acknowledge, you know, the accomplishments that we've done together in an effort to continue to move forward, and certainly the staff that's current with us, and those who have served and gone on to other things. I just would like to acknowledge them, so do appreciate that. Paul, next.
He gave us directions. I practiced, but he didn't respond to my emails. Gotta keep it light. Pretty typical outline of who we are, our foundation, and then the data, the budget, and looking to the future, and of course, questions at the end. Next. Our org chart, every year, adjust. We're going to revisit this as we go through the presentation. You know, currently on the top, the fire chief, the fire marshal, our public safety, the assistant fire marshals, and the fire inspectors. You know, we are finally hired out on that. It took us almost three years, if you recall, for those that have been here. As a, again, part of our journey is about three years to get that top block together. And that is really your community risk reduction investment, which is super important to Winuski. And then on the bottom is our part-time on-call staff. To kind of keep it relevant on the staffing levels and what the needs are, you know, we continue to tell you kind of how many should be, and the red blocks are the vacant, so you can see, and it's part of my presentation, that our part-time on-call, we continue to be low, and we are critically low at this time. And I'll speak a little bit more to that in the presentation. Next. Community risk reduction, the five Es. Again, Winuski, in my opinion, you continue to lead the way in Vermont. This is a real thing nationally, community risk reduction. We've been doing this since day one, so since I've sat here in twenty seventeen. Very proud of, again, we should all be very proud of the accomplishments and what we continue to do. You know, there's a lot of fire departments that are fire EMS-based, we happen to be fire, community risk reduction-based, and I would even flip that, community risk reduction, fire-based. And, you know, your investment and your thoughtfulness in doing that has, continues to pay huge dividends in this community. Year, year to year, we see things, and we help residents and keep landlords here and improve the quality of life doing that. Next. Kind of our year in review. Again, we try to paint the picture of, again, who we are. As you can see, when I say community risk reduction and fire-based, public building inspections continues to lead the way. That's the bulk of our work, Monday through Friday. That's what this team does, day in, day out. Our emergency response is staying pretty consistent. I suspect that number has dropped a little bit. I suspect we will see that drop again as we no longer do auto aid into Colchester. So that will level out. It's going to take a, you know, it's going to take a period of time over, over our budget cycles. You know, the building permits, we list, because that's an important, who's investing in the city, kind of what's the returns on the, you know. That continues to stay pretty steady. During COVID, we saw it drop obvious, obviously. You know, that number is reflecting, you know, the high interest rates, the difficulties people are having getting some of the projects off the ground. But overall, still fairly good numbers for Winuski. And then the re-inspections continues to be a focus. You know, Chief Spittle coming on board, really, you know, spending his first months understanding those, improving the communication with, with those property owners, and just us really understanding what's driving that number, and it's a lot of different things. Whether it's cost of materials, availability of contractors, landlord-tenant relationships, and just everyday, you know, everyday life is affecting some of those re-inspections. Again, whether it's the landlord who, you know, doesn't have the money, can't get the contractor, or the tenant who is struggling with their own, you know, challenges as far as access, and, you know, it's just, there's a lot of pieces. So we're going to continue to stay focused on that. John has been very focused on customer service, doing, revamping how we do our, scheduling our inspections, just trying to really bring the accountability on both sides and, you know, drive that communication that needs to happen between the property owner and the tenants to allow us to get in there in a timely manner, allow the, allow the work to be done, and also be respectful of a resident's space. So there's a lot to that. When you start to dive into that, it's different. Each inspection, each unit is different, it's a different set of individuals, it's very different. On the bottom, I continue to provide you with the kind of, the year-to-year data. Pretty, you know, happy with this data. It's really driving, and I hope, you know, you understand that it's driving some of, some of my decision-making and some of the workflows. You know, emergency response, that's kind of, it is what it is. You know, we don't want to see spikes on it, but, you know, so when the numbers come down, again, I think as we, again, are not going into Colchester, I suspect that to drop. And again, your, your community risk reduction efforts are keeping a lid on that emergency response. The public building inspections, so that's right in the center, and the two furthest left, furthest right, that's the same quadrant in the city. So, you know, we expected, or I expected this data to show us in a four-year cycle, those, those should be pretty close. Unless we've had, you know, like the downtown districts, we're going to get a big spike with the hotel and housing, but we'll be able to explain that spike. It shouldn't be, you know, it shouldn't be unknown to us, why all of a sudden we've got more inspections or less. So that's why that information's good. And of course, we're tracking the re-inspections. Again, we're only in the third, third year of tracking that, so it'd be interesting to see, you know, once we get to the fourth year, I'll be able to look at the quadrants and we'll be able to understand, you know, that center yellowish, if you will, maybe where our oldest housing stock is. So there was some pretty complicated work that needed to happen, and it caused more re-inspections. There could be a whole host of things, but each year, we're trying to understand what that data is. Please stop me if there's questions. Next, please, Paul. Eight hundred and forty-one initial inspections, kind of the bubbles on the four corners, if you will, around the pie, really are the code sets that we're working in. Top left, you know, that's the National Fire Protection, that's really the driver, the really big code in the state. The state adopts it, therefore, we fall into it, under our MOU with the state. If you move to the top right, that's the National Electrical Code. Again, we're not electricians, so this is really picking up the very basics of electrical violations. You know, being able to see loose wires, broken faceplates, you know, light fixtures, so GFI's, very basic stuff. We're not in testing circuits and all that, that kind of thing. So this is really driving like a maintenance, if you will, the quality of the housing, sustainability of the housing. Bottom, bottom left, bounce around a little bit, is the Vermont Rental Code. Again, that's more of your quality of life pieces, and then authority having jurisdiction, eight percent, which is, is really when this is, really gives our inspectors the space. Something's going on that doesn't quite fit in one of those other bubbles, but we can have a discussion and get a correction that, if nothing else, may fix part of a relationship that's, that's going wrong. So we try to be very careful with the AHJ, but it is an important tool. Compared to last year, those, all four of these stayed relatively even. Nothing, again, got our attention with that. Next, please. Emergency responses, again, these continue to stay pretty stable as far as the subject matter, if you will, meaning fire EMS, hazardous conditions, service, good intent, or false alarms. And, you know, this is really becoming reflective of Winuski as a whole. You know, like, false alarms, we expect with our rental base with, that we have, a public building base, that those false alarms are not out of, out of whack, if you will. They're not. They're, they're a lot, but they're, those are good calls to go to, if you will.
And a false alarm can be something like, somebody in Keene's Crossing thinks they smell smoke, calls you up, you respond to see if there is fire.
Or a smoke detector may be beeping because of the batteries, right? We certainly don't want a hundred and forty fire calls and fifty-one false alarms. We, these numbers are, are, are good, if you will. None of these numbers are good, but given what they are. Next, Paul, because it's a little bit more explanatory of what this is. And then the National Fire Incident Reporting System, you know, I started this last year, there's, there's several different types of how we categorize these, and I picked the top three, right? And out of fifty-one fire calls, thirty-one of those were cooking fires contained to the, you know, contained to the container, which is good, right? I mean, we don't want, again, we don't want that to be thirty-one building fires. So, you know, this is just kind of trying to give folks a snapshot of, of what type of categories we're going to. You know, I'll just touch on the, you know, the eight, assist police, that could be a whole host of things of, you know, gaining access. That's a lot of it. You know, the good intent, you know, we're canceled en route, so someone's made a report of something, and then between the call and us getting there, there's been some sort of determination that we don't need to be there. So that's kind of a canceled en route. You know, alarm going off in the building and the sprinkler company calls and says, we're here doing testing. All right, we're not going to continue, a person may continue, but it's really canceled en route. The EMS on the top right moving down, if you will, you know, forty-three assists to rescue, that may be lift assist, that may be cardiac arrest. Could be a whole host of different things there. The false alarms, again, we break that out. So you, you know, that's smoke detector activations, no fire, unintentional. You know, the fire alarm, there is a difference between smoke detectors and fire alarm systems. And then, you know, smoke alarms due to a malfunction with a piece of equipment. And then the hazardous conditions, the fifteen gas leaks on the majority of those were on Main Street. And we had a very large string of multiple department responses, rightfully so. But there was an intervention, if you will, with the crews, Public Works, the Association of General Contractors, where we met with the contractors. You know, we, all the teams kind of came together and we spoke about, you know, why they're happening, what areas are happening, and they were able to identify, actually, it really got down to some of their staff and the inexperience of their staff. So the removal of two or three people, the gas leaks hitting the gas lines stopped. So, not that it's any fun that it ended up being individuals, but we got to the core of the problem.
Do, as far as that hazard condition, I know this is the top three, do you ever see any incidences related to household hazardous waste? Volatile chemicals that might be in the home?
No, you know, I would say most of that shows up during inspections. You know, we'll, we'll see either gas, you know, petroleum products stored in the house, gas containers or LP containers. You know, that shows up mostly there.
The reason why I ask as a follow-up question is when Chin and Salt Waste does their Rover events, if you ever partner with, with them on those events, or just opportunity to continue to educate the community for risk reduction purposes?
No, and that's a good point. I mean, it's, you know, I will say, it seems like, you know, every year, there's some sort of different chemicals that are mixed, while someone's trying to like unplug a floor drain, or so they've, they've got these chemicals laying around like you're suggesting, and they, well, that's not quite working, so we'll add something else without understanding the two may or may not play nice, you know, off gases or that sort of thing. So it's a good point to, to be mindful of that resource.
Okay, thanks.
I think from the experience of the inspections, I know the crew would provide recommendations to people if they found materials that needed to be disposed of, so we certainly give them advice on where, where to put those products or where they should.
Storage and disposal, yeah.
Proper storage and what should be in the house and not.
Next, please, Paul. Service demands, again, multiple years of showing the calls by day of the week, calls by month, and then calls with hourly breakdown, which I want to spend the most time on. And a goal, and I think will happen this next cycle, is understanding, you know, I have never seen Winuski Public Safety, meaning police, fire, and EMS, kind of on this, with this same data. I know police presents it, but I've never seen it together, right? I have looked at it separately, and it's, it's, it's not exact, but it's pretty similar, which, you know, this data should be telling us all something, and it, and it is, right? And so more to come with that as far as, you know, staffing, you know, how we staff during the week, and, you know, certainly the hourly breakdown for me is super important. And I tried to put two blocks on here, and this is, you know, starting at midnight goes, or excuse me, starts, you know, early morning goes to midnight, and the blocks reflect my six PM to six AM concern that I have expressed. And certainly would tell you that it's it's, it's the biggest concern I have at this point, and this is, this isn't our staff. This isn't the staff that's doing this work. It's our ability or inability to know that anyone is available from six PM to six AM on any given time. So just as we got here tonight, just before the start of council, there was a call. We looked at each other, because we're like, there's no one, is someone going to pick this call up? Someone did, and the group that's here right now is super dedicated, but that's not sustainable, right? I'd be foolish to tell you that I'm comfortable with it because these three or four people are pulling this workload, because that could change in a heartbeat. It only takes one household for me to lose two. Um, it only takes one household for me to lose two people. Um, and that's huge, out of the numbers we have. So, you, and that's, that's not easy for us to solve. Um, you know, with our, we're not twenty-four seven, we can't be twenty-four seven because of the facility. And just, we're not gonna have the answer tonight, but I want to tell you that for the first time in ten years, I'm sitting here, I don't usually tell you I'm uncomfortable with things, right? I've, I've always, we have taken a long journey together to, to get to a better place, and we have. Um, but certainly this needs to be addressed. Um, and part of the, the budget, again, starts, takes another step forward in, in trying to address this, and we'll visit it again. You know, that center block really reflects our daytime. And again, your investment with community risk reduction, the cross-trained as fire. So, you know, whether it's Chief or myself, we're in here typically six, eight is pretty close to six P. Um, with others, there's two days a week now, there's five of us here. Um, you know, they're, they're not just sitting at the firehouse, they're out doing inspections, but if we have a fire call, um, I know who's coming. Um, so, and I don't expect that we're gonna have five people here overnight. Uh, please don't take it at that, right? I mean, there's a scale of economy that Winuski can do, and the importance of us, um, working with our other communities, and, uh, you know, trying to continue to figure that out. Um, but I really wanted to highlight that, and, and it will show up again.
How are you, um, just jumping in with a question that, feel free to say, we'll get to that later, too. With the anticipation of, um, housing growth over the next, you know, five, ten years plus, um, what thresholds are you seeing for, you know, looking at the org chart of vacancies you have now versus what future need we may need, or, we may, um, it may be important to keep in mind, um, you know, beyond FY twenty-seven?
So, I am uncomfortable enough to tell you that I will be looking very closely at any development, continued development in the city of Winuski.
Okay.
Um, when we pop up a hotel and a three-hundred car parking garage and housing, um, you know, we, we contemplate allowing ten-story buildings. You know, we, that's, we can't do that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, these buildings come with a lot of different systems. And again, I know, you know, if we keep those systems up, you know, I know where that brings us, right? And, um, so I, I would be saying to you and to this community that, very cautious about any future development.
Mm-hmm, good, thank you.
Next, please, Paul. Again, service demands and the staffing, I tried to explain the, the daytime. Um, again, that's green, and that's we're fully hired out. Um, and again, they're cross-trained. The paid-on call is red, again, not because of the work the staff does, it's simply our numbers and not knowing if someone is available during those hours. And then our weekend duty crews, um, you know, that's, that's a great thing. Again, it's a huge commitment that your paid-on-call folks do, um, meaning they're available six AM to six PM on Sunday for stipend, plus their call. Uh, but they have to kind of be available. Um, and, you know, that's no small commu-, uh, commitment. And again, when I tell you I have two people in a household, you're thinking two full weekends that that household's allowing someone to be available and doing that coverage, plus a split. So that's three weekends that that household is tied to your, your fire coverage, right? And, um, again, if I lose that household, if they choose to, you know, to go to another community or buy a house, or whatever those circumstances may be, and it has happened, um, that's very impactful, um, and we can't overcome that. We just, you know, again, for those that haven't been here, when I started in twenty-seventeen, the roster was twenty-seven, or twenty-six, close. Um, and a seven today. And again, that's a national trend. Um, we're now hearing it from St. Mike's Rescue with, you know, the inability to get people interested in doing the work. And the bottom graph is just really showing the workload, um, percentage of calls, if you will, that any, you know, the weekend duty crew, the paid-on-call and the daytime is, is covering. And the space that I am most concerned about, the paid-on-call, um, is pulling the most, the biggest workload in the call percentage. So, it, this data is telling me I should be concerned. And, you know, again, the majority of our call volume, I don't know if anyone's gonna answer that call. Next, please, Paul. Again, just some of the challenges, you know, the, to it, um, you know, the paid-on-call, again, no one is complaining here. Um, but our numbers are so low, um, you know, it's demanding that our full-time staff, especially on Wednesdays, when it's training night. Um, you know, you're, it's hard to do a training with two people. Um, and, uh, you know, it's not unheard of out of seven to only get two. Um, you may get seven the next week, you may get two this week. Um, and sometimes it's unknown, leading right up to the training, like, you know, half an hour, an hour before. We try to open the communication. But it almost, almost demands that our, our paid staff make themselves available, um, and work those long days so that we can have meaningful training.
Right.
Um, and that's training that I could do during the day, um, quite frankly. So it's, it's really putting, putting some workload on them. The paid-on-call, you've heard me just not knowing who's available. Um, delayed time response, if it's outside of Winuski, we have a five-minute rule, kind of, if you put in an application, um, about how quickly you can get to the station, then you need to get dressed, then we still need to respond. Um, we're in the nine-minute average of time of call to getting a truck. Um, you know, if, in an urban setting, if we apply that to national standards, you're in the bottom. You're, and, and again, my comfort there, I say that, and I, and Winuski can't afford to be at the top. Um, but your investment in community risk reduction allows me to contemplate and take slow steps out of that bottom, you know, upward. Again, training levels, um, again, I don't know who's gonna come, right? So I could end up with two brand-new firefighters going to some of the most complicated buildings in Chittenden County, um, that you have here. Um, you know, your, your building, as Public Works, um, said last week, so, um, you know, John Rafter reminded us that leadership is some of the biggest investments Winuski has ever done. Um, you know, with the Main Street and just the hotel project and some of the, um, we're gonna get called to, to deal with instances in those, and I'm thirty years in, and these buildings challenge me. They're, they're complicated. When you go to Spinner Place, um, Winuski Falls Way, and that whole, that fire alarm covers that whole block. Um, or you go to Halkene, and it's one fire pump that covers four different buildings. You know, it's, they're complicated buildings.
Yeah.
Um, and it takes time to, to learn how to be a firefighter, but then to be able to understand and, um, deal with those.
Just before we move on from that, do the new, do building codes require updates to, to that? To have more ac-, uh, access, more readily available?
So, how a building code works, um, is, so the state just adopted new codes. That doesn't mean everything's gotta be retrofitted.
I'm at, I'm wondering about new construction.
So new construction, yes. It'll have new technology and new pieces, but again, new technology comes with new skill sets, and it's just, um...
Yeah, just context building on your last comment of, will the building code help ease some of the strain?
It, it will, and, and that part of our department, me and the community risk reduction being fully staffed and understanding the impacts, um, you know, staff has been at the hotel, the parking garage, and the new housing every, at least once a week since it started construction. So that's how, you know, we make sure things are in certain locations, or if we need X, Y, Z fitting here, um, so that we can operate in those buildings safely and effectively.
Great.
Some of those pieces we, we refer to as the AHJ, the Authority Having Jurisdiction, comes into play when they're building that. Because they may meet code and meet the specifications to the code, but it may not be the best choice for Winuski and how we operate. So there are things that we provide input on a weekly basis, such as locations of the FTC for those sprinkler system, types of fittings, where they're gonna be. We provide that input and work with them during that process. That's why we're on-site once a week to do that.
Great.
So there's many features of the new buildings that are beneficial for us, but at the same time, there's a lot of complexity to new, to new structures as well.
Thank you.
Another example, quick one, of downtown with the hotels specifically, was they wanted a fireplace. Like this grand fireplace, wood-burning fireplace, so that means a chimney, right? We all know chimneys, pre-assault chimney fires, and we were like, timeout. Um, really need to look at some other alternatives. Um, so it ended up being gas-fired appliances, um, that we can simply shut a valve off, and, yeah. Um, it's just, the code would have allowed them to do that, um, but as Authority Having Jurisdiction, we're like, not so much.
Okay, great, good to know.
Again, the we- weekend duty crew, it's a work-life balance. Um, just the ability to, to keep up on the training and, uh, you know, our full-time staff, I, this is their full-time job. And I just, you know, worry about the training, hours worked. Um, our part-time staff have a full-time job, so I have to take that into account and understand, you know, the impacts of such. I know, I use, there's some staff that may have been out in the sun ninety degrees all day during road construction, you know, and then we draw them in for a structure fire, you know, they're not in the same condition as, you know, so it's, it's, there's just a lot of nuances to, to operation, operating a combination department. Next slide, please, Paul. Um, this is a new one for us, sorry it doesn't show up all that great on here, um, probably not the best choice of background colors. Um, so for those at home, or for those here in the room that can't see it, the red on the top is three responders. Um, orange is one responder, yellow is two, and one is, or, green is three, excuse me. Did I say that right? Um, so what I'm trying to re-, show you here is multiple years, um, so we went back to twenty. And, again, data, um, you know, tend to go back to data, and what's the data telling us? And we know our numbers have declined, so, um, there's no surprise that that top green, um, which would be three or more responders, is declining, right? Our numbers are going down, so there's less people available responding to these calls and volume. Um, so that number should trend down, and it is. Um, and then the bottom lines, um, you know, the really good one on there is the red one, and that's one or less responders. That line is not growing, it's not trending up, which is good, right? Um, but the other two lines are, reflect, um, one and two responders, if you will, I believe.
Yeah.
Yes, um, check my own notes. Um, and as those trend up, um, that's, again, our concern, that's the unknown for me of, um, that's a concerning trend. What I will say is, that, you know, as we take these steps forward, is, under our current model, that is a concern, six P to six A. You're probably tired of me saying that. Um, and there's a big difference if it's during the day, and it's, um, Chief and I there, like today. We know our skill sets, we know that I can operate the truck, he can wear an air pack, um, you know, we know the buildings. There's a big difference if it's, you know, two full-timers, if you will, or two people that are regularly here, um, that know it versus we just don't know what the mix is coming. Um, so there's a big difference, um, and, and should be acknowledged. Next, please. Super important one, fire given or received. Um, again, you're, you understand, you know, with the Colchester, um, town of Colchester, um, just the equity in, in how we're, they're responding in Winuski and we're responding there, um, you know, um, and that led us to really, um, connecting the bridge to Burlington, if you will. There is an old kind of standing rule that the bridge wasn't connected for fire service, if you will, between the two cities. Um, so I'm very pleased that, um, the previous, um, chief and the current chief, um, in Burlington as a whole, um, have a very different view than the past, as I do as your fire chief. Um, and the Vermont Air, Air National Guard, um, plays a huge role, um, with us responding into the city. So, um, you know, auto aid, any, if the dispatchers downstairs get reported, obviously, a fire, or smoke in the building, or water flowing in a building, or smell of natural gas, um, those departments are automatically dispatched with us. So that's auto aid. In turn, there's, again, some residual Colchester stuff, auto aid that we provide. Um, again, it's super important, if you're gonna get it, you need to be able to give it to, to your ability. Um, and it may not be the same level, but we still need to be able to support them, um, find, find where we can help, help them. And then the mutual aid, obviously, that's just, you know, whether we're going to South Burlington, or, you know, the mutual aid into Colchester now, if they have a fire, we're certainly going there. Um, and, and as those other departments further out, if you will, um, you know, South Burlington coming in, Colchester coming in, Milton's been here, you know, some of your other departments, when we have a bigger instance, that's the mutual aid received. So again, plays a, it's certainly a part that we need to acknowledge, um, need to be able to, um, give. And, uh, it's obviously a huge part of our, our responses. Next, please. Our accomplishments, um, recruitment and retention, I'm gonna speak a little bit more to that. Um, we continue to try to be part of the Make, Make Me a Firefighter statewide campaign. Um, the first year, we had one. Um, this year, we had zero. Um, and what I would say is, across the state, um, the rural departments have, um, benefited more from that than kind of your urban departments, meaning the city of Burlington or Williston. It's, it's, it's been, been beneficial for the rural Vermont, if you will. Excited and feel super important to continue exploring the improvements with, uh, fire dispatching. We spent some time this year, I think we're headed in a, a very good direction, um, with that. Um, I appreciate Chief Hazinga's, um, willingness to, to come to the table and discuss that as far as what the community needs are and, and how we may solve that, and overall put Winuski in a better position, um, you know, providing services and, and what the future may bring. You know, we're full on the community risk reduction side. Um, you know, the, the community outreach, um, the Business Safety Roundtable, continue to try to, to go to those meetings. Um, you know, they're, um, they're a bit more, um, individualized now. Um, you know, it's been hard for city staff to get there and, and, uh, with the agendas and stuff, just trying to figure out how it fits in with us being at the table.
Are those still Tuesdays?
I will get you, there was just an invite by Laura, so I will get that to you.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Um, strengthening the partners with the auto aid, and then the part-time on-staff. Um, completed Chittenden, uh, Community Basic Class, which again is no small feat for someone that we're asking to go do that. It's an eighty-hour class, we're fortunate it's held here in Chittenden County, so that is really the baseline that we would, we would put a new firefighter through. Next, please. Uh, twenty-seven goals, um, you know, we obviously want to continue to work with, um, property owners and potential owners, developers, to increase housing, with the caveat that I am super concerned of, of what that means. Um, even the AUDs, um, what?
AUDs.
AUD, uh, sorry. You know, are complicated in some instances, and just, you know, how, we want to support that. But, again, I gotta be careful what the demand is and, and essentially the risks that we're, could possibly be putting people in. Um, so, um, we're at the table, we're ready, willing, and able, wanting to have, be part of those. Um, Chief Spittle continues to be part of those. I put back on here, you know, host the roundtable regarding fire and EMS delivery models. You know, I think, you know, Winuski needs to continue to move forward as much as it can on its own. But I think we also need to keep open arms to what other models are out there. You know, certainly there's no model that I'm pointing to or suggesting the community has its arms open. No one has the capacity to, to do this, let alone even think that way right now. I don't believe there's any community, there's any Chittenden County community thinking that way right now. So it's a very hard discussion to even get off the ground, if you will. The housing, the public building registry, education, super important every year. More so this year as the state adopted some new codes. You know, we've evaluated, it's, it will be impactful, but we can manage what that is. Meaning it's not like, there's no new window sizes, so everyone's doing all new windows or like we've seen in the past. There's just, it's mostly education and I believe it gives people some choices with some of the devices that they can now put in. I'm extremely happy to tell you the acceptance of the ladder truck is real. I've seen, I've seen a picture of the chassis and I've seen a picture of the body ready for paint. So I suspect in February that truck will be here. So yeah, that's been a long, a long pull.
John texted me a picture of that and then the deer that he got.
It was almost as good. So super happy, you know, excited about that. Again, will be a big lift for, for the staff to get trained, it's a different type of truck. It's bigger, meaning it, the ladder's bigger, not the truck itself, but. The emergency generator replacement at the station, we can, that's just, that's kind of a holdover, if you will, to these two. The emergency generator and the station designer holdover, it's just capacity to be able to get there and deal with those. Safety, connected people is the dispatching, I touched base on that, recruitment and retention. Would love to get to a community risk reduction assessment, community-wide, in the different districts. That would again, really start to paint a picture and I think support some of the staffing conversations we're having and future development. Next slide please. Justin has like tripled the slides I have, so. What's included, you know, again, we're making another run at the, excuse me, let me back up. The, the fire budget this year is just over a million, which includes, the first one is an internal cost-neutral promotion. So then I believe the next slide that we'll go to, don't go yet, but we'll explain this a little better is, this is one of the last pieces, I would say, that I would really encourage us to do and I am, I'm saying we should do as far as the community risk reduction investments. You know, we're fully hired and we have some exceptional staff right now and I wanna keep them. And this, the workload for them, not the workload, but the details and the intensity of that work has changed. And when you have certain staff that naturally can deal with that, I think we wanna capture that. It's, it's very beneficial for our residents, we're very fortunate. So again, it's, it's more of a retention piece for that investment. The proposed full-time evening position, we're kind of running at that again. For those that were here last year, we proposed a position last year, had zero applicants. And when I did some outreach, it was really about the compensation, really looking for someone that wanted to work evenings and then the compensation of doing such. So, and again, this is much different. This is not an investment in so much as in the community risk reduction. This is really about emergency response in the evening. And if you go, remember back to the hourly and I had the blocks on the end, this hire really shrinks that right-hand block. So anytime, anything we can do in the future to shrink those blocks is the right direction. And again, this is where the economy of scale for me with Winuski, understanding, you know, the, to solve it, you need to go twenty-four seven. But again, there's some big challenges that will, I understand and I think together, we need to acknowledge, we'll take some time to, to put in place. And, but we, hopefully we'll continue to take some steps forward.
With that position, will that also help with the Wednesday night coverage you were talking about?
Yes, it'll allow us to rotate at least more.
So also helps, again, thinking retention of current staff as well as?
Work-life balance.
Yep.
I would agree.
Yeah, I think going back to one of the statements that Chief made earlier was that, you know, it's difficult to get folks who are interested in the model currently. And the model currently, as I tell people when we interview them for part-time on-staff call, is that it's a part-time job, you don't know when your hours are and you don't know what day you're gonna work. So if you can imagine that model is not something that you step up to the plate and say, great. But some of the things that we're looking at with this is having somebody who is there longer hours or different hours during the daytime, fill some of those, the other looking further down the road and part of the station design and what can we do to make that availability? If I told you, you're gonna be part-time staff and you can work three days a week and you understand what days you're gonna work and what your hours are, that's reasonable. But right now, there's not a lot of those available. So if we can model ourselves to get the station into a position where somebody can stay there at night or can be available on a regular basis, known basis, let's say, that helps us to fill that time with the known factor that we keep talking about, we don't have. So it's, it's a very important step and that's again, part of, you know, you look and you hit, hit your head on the wall a lot of times with one model, but maybe that doesn't work anymore and this is the direction to go, so. Just wanted to throw that out there. I was on the other side of that for many years, doing the full-time job and then the part-time staff. So I totally understand how that works, you know, with life, family and everything else. It's a difficult chore to say, I'm available for that, you know, all those hours.
I was, I was shocked to hear Chief explain during the council, councilor's visits that what I refer to as weekend duty, that some of the staff refer to it as house arrest. I was like, wow!
My in-laws would, not knowing, they say, oh no, my daughter can't come, my son-in-law won't be here this weekend because he's on house arrest. It meant something different, but.
Next slide please. Again, just reiterating off of the previous slide, the promotion within the current staff is in that top circle. It's, it's really, you know, retention and meeting the future or known needs, change needs. And then the new hires on that bottom, bottom block. There is a, I don't wanna separate the staff, cause that's not to anyone's benefit. But certainly there's a delineation of what we're trying to do there.
Yeah, and to clarify, if you're wondering why we haven't put a title on it, it's because we found, as in this year, it, we need some flexibility potentially based on what's gonna happen during recruitment. So that's why it's vague.
Next slide please. This is kind of the roll-up for the budget. Again, this includes the cost-neutral and then the higher, really salaries benefits drive, is driving this budget. Most of the other line items are fairly consistent, if you will, year to year. We've, we've tried to hold, hold a lot of those, the contracts and professional services, that's just us leveraging technology. And our record management system, that sort of thing. Next slide please. Emerging issues, no surprise, recruitment and retention. Put that in perspective, I'm not gonna read this line for line. When I asked HR, you know, how many applications from July one of twenty-four to June thirtieth to twenty-five for part-time employment we had? I'd like to have fallen out of my chair, hundred and eight applications. We hired eight, retained one. And we lost numbers, we lost overall numbers. So that's a lot. So it really gave, you know, gave me pause to, you know, you know, what that is. And again, you know, the facility is part of it, just the commitment level, once people figure out, you know, what the commitment is. And it's very hard for us to take someone who can't come in and have the full commitment. You know, like someone that says they can only meet once a month. It just doesn't work, right, to stay up on the training and really be, you know, proficient and safe with the demands here in Winuski. So, yeah, and I would say, you know, there's a lot of, I think, across the board with employment of, we're ghosted, if you will, no-shows to the, the schedule and interview people go through and schedule it and then just, it's, there's no communication. We're actually sitting there waiting for the interview, I have more than I'd like to, like to think. Yeah, and then I would say, you know, again with the staffing, you know, you're currently at seven. One of those is probationary and two, two of those, one is on leave and one is on a medical rotation. You know, as he tries to finish his schooling. So he's out for four to six weeks at a time, rolling. So again, out of that seven, you're really down to five or four at times. So the numbers are critically low, for sure. The other emerging issue, next slide please, which we found out in November. Saint Mike's Rescue College, Fire Rescue, has provided rescue free of charge to Winuski. It's been a fifty-five-year partnership, a long, long time, that they've provided ambulance transport to Winuski. They bill for services, but again, November, it was just before hunting season, that's why I know the date, it's like the fifteenth. You know, we met with them and there was, that's, it was really as simple as that. That's the first time we've heard anything of the conversation. We knew it would come, it's no surprise that, you know, the cost of doing business, we, we don't have help, it's harder for them to recruit. You know, it was gonna cost you a hundred and fifty bucks, or a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, sorry. So obviously it generates a lot of conversation. You know, the actions around that is secure a short-term contract for this next budget, which we've, we're confident we're gonna be able to do. We've had a meeting since, I suspect we will have that, we've always have had a written contract with them. And then initiate monthly meetings so that we can understand what's driving that cost, what is that ask? You know, what's, you know, an example would be, you know, when Winuski's built out, you know, the, the demand in Winuski's gone up. I'm not sure the data supports that, them saying that. So we'll do our due diligence and ask those questions and have, bring something back for the twenty-eight cycle.
Is there, two questions, a change in leadership?
So there has been a lot of change in leadership and, you know, the town of Colchester and its relationship with Saint Mike's also plays a role. Cause they're relying on the same service. I mean, Colchester has its own ambulance, but Saint Mike's covers part of it. But Colchester funds part of the fire department, Colchester, or Saint Mike's Fire. So there's all these different nuances of these agreements and none of them can be looked at by themselves. You have to kind of understand the whole picture. And yes, they've had a change in leadership in their board and yes, they've had a new fire chief and rescue chief brought on board.
Cause this feels like a change of leadership decision. And then as a follow-up, other than ourselves, Colchester, what, do you know what other municipalities are relying on Saint Mike's?
Uh, that is it. So they used to do Heinsberg, but they pulled back out of Heinsberg. So there's fully parts of their first response to the fifteen corridor, Fannie Allen, and then Winuski.
I have more questions, but I know this is a very long presentation, so.
I'm almost to my, I'm almost to the end, so. But if, if we can meet or if they're offline, whatever, I would welcome it and if I don't have them, I'll get them. I certainly don't wanna speak for that service. I will say, you know, I am not here saying that a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is, it's not worth it to Winuski. Or the service they provide doesn't equal that value. I think it's just the, kind of the shock of boom, here it is. And then just the preparation of explaining those numbers.
Thank you.
The last, fourth piece of that is really us trying to support the EMS, which separate from Saint Mike's is just how can we continue to support that demand in the community? And I feel it really plugs in some, really nicely to the community risk reduction, if you will, getting ahead of some of those calls. And that is us gaining our licensure to do a very basic emergency medical response. We technically do it now with cardiac arrest and some of the other stuff, so this is, it's more, you know, it is a certification that you get at the state, put it, you know, it's like a sixteen-hour certification. So it's, it's not like we're starting an ambulance service, it's not like we're, you know, giving, you know, doing advanced life support stuff. It's really at a basic level and that way, if a second, third or fourth ambulance is in the city, which happens, our staff can go and assist that agency.
And would that be kind of interesting professional development for current staff?
Absolutely, as we free up some of our time in Colchester, you know, again, that's part of some of this, people not being super interested when you're sitting home, we used to do a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty more calls in the Colchester. So now that, you know, those calls have dropped off and, I don't know how else to say this, you know, part of being in this service is responding to emergencies and going out and helping people. And you know, when you've experienced having that call volume and then it drops off, some people may feel differently about staying home all weekend, there's times they don't leave. Which is a good thing overall for our residents, but it's not a good thing for retention.
Well, there's also, I may be misremembering, there's also like a per-call response bonus or payment, is that?
So they get paid per call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so they get a stipend.
Okay, yep, the stipend and then?
Yeah, so like six AM Saturday to six PM, you know, Sunday, you, you, Sunday, you may, you get a hundred bucks for the stipend. I'm gonna average it, plus your call, but if you, you know, it's still, I don't think, many of them are doing it for the pay.
But it makes even more sense for the context of why additional licensure, additional training would be of interest.
But again, I, you know, and that's something we can plug in when we're staffed, right? I would do it on a duty weekend, I would do it during the day, I wouldn't do it six P to six A. Cause this is gonna bury us further with that, right? I'm not trying to magnify problem. Next slide, should be questions.
Congrats.
I've already asked you many, so.
Thank you very much for that. It's a lot of information and you really dive into, I think, trying to help. It's, um, a lot of information and you really dive into, I think, trying to help us understand the problem more, what you're doing well, what, where you need a little more assistance. Um, honestly, you could have showed us and asked for a lot more money and I'd probably be supportive of it, but I know that you.
Paul, can we go back?
You can, I said hit us with everything, but, um, I know that, you know, we, I've been here for three-ish years and you've kind of been talking about these retention issues and you've been, I've appreciated how you have tried to tackle the problem really with a lot of data and thinking about the best way that you could approach it. You know, you could have come and asked for X, Y, and Z, but you really put a lot of effort into it, so I really appreciate that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I'll hold mine for another time.
All right, in that case, I'm gonna take a five-minute recess, so we'll come back at seven thirty-five to hear from the police chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Time is seven thirty-six, we will come back from our break, um, turn it over to the police chief.
Thank you, happy to be here. Uh, my name's Justin Heisinger, I'm the chief of police. I brought with me tonight Lieutenant Tom Carden and Officer Ally Jackson. When we started our budget process, they, um, both expressed interest in being a part of the process and presenting it. And, um, I think it's a great, great thing for them to be here, so I appreciate them, uh, them being here tonight. Next slide. So our outline, we're gonna go over who we are, our org chart, our foundation and focus. That's a brief overview of President Obama's Task Force Report on Twenty-First Century Policing. Um, again, that still provides our foundation and our focus and kind of our driving force behind our strategic plan. That's gonna be presented by Lieutenant Carden. Um, after that, we'll get into Winuski PD today, our stats, our community policing data, our DLO, um, community outreach team update, um, some community caretaking stories presented by Officer Jackson and community outreach events also presented by Officer Jackson. Then we'll get into the, uh, budget portion, strategic vision, um, PD budget, dispatch budget, and emerging issues. Any questions on that? Next slide. So our org chart, uh, police chief, we have two lieutenants, both those positions are now full. We have one dispatcher supervisor, that's full, three sergeants, um, one of those positions is vacant. We have three dispatchers, those positions are full, four on-call dispatchers, which is, um, relatively new. Uh, we were hovering around two, we were able to increase that to four, so that's a big relief on the dispatching side of things. Um, we have one detective downstairs, eight officers, o- obviously our DLO, and one on-call staff member as of right now. Going back to the, um, vacant sergeant position, we are technically at full staff, we'll get into that in a little bit. We do have one person scheduled to go to the academy, um, in January, that will put us at full staff. So that vacant sergeant position, um, is something that we're, we're ultimately gonna fill. Um, it's a position that we fill from in-house, so getting people trained to, and having the experience to take that position is a big portion as to why that hasn't been, been filled yet. Um, any questions on that? All right, I'm gonna turn it over to Tom to kind of break down, um, this, um, uh, portion of the, of the, um, presentation. You know, we have this slide in here, um, every presentation, at least since I've been doing it, and we just kind of touch on it a little bit, but I think it's important that we drill down a little bit more on it. We have a couple of new counselors and, um, again, this is just kind of our foundation, so I wanted him to spend a little bit more time talking about that, that report that came out in twenty-fifteen, cause I, I think it's very important.
So again, as the chief said, um, these six pillars continue to be a foundation for the Winuski Police Department and provide guidance to our strategic plan. Um, each pillar can shape long-term goals for us, key initiatives and performance measures. So the first pillar, building trust and legitimacy, um, basically where we look to is prioritizing transparency and accountability, um, recognizing and addressing implicit bias, treat people with dignity and respect, and upholding the guardian mindset versus a warrior-only mindset. Um, we wanna be seen as a trusted partner and not just an enforcement agency. Down to the second pillar, policy and oversight, uh, this is where we, you know, implement clear, up-to-date policies. Some of those are set forth by the state of Vermont, like our use of force policy, it's a statewide policy, um, ensuring proper use of force, de-escalation and crisis intervention. Um, we basically wanna focus on modern, clear and accountable policies to promote consistency, fairness and stronger protection for both the public and the officers. Um, moving down to pillar three, technology and social media. This is where we adapt technology that improves policing and community trust. So, you know, ensuring our body cameras, data systems, social media are used responsibly. Um, community policing and crime reduction, promoting officer engagement outside of just enforcement activity with the community, um, supporting proactive policing and not just reactive policing. And using partnerships with the community members to solve problems. Focusing, you know, on shared responsibility for public safety with problem-oriented policing initiatives, informed by local concerns to lower the crime through collaboration and not just enforcement. Um, moving down to the fifth pillar, training and education, continuing to enhance our tactical skills, uh, communication and de-escalation, cultural responsiveness, mental health and crisis response, um, focusing on leadership development throughout an officer's career, not just promoting and then training, training first, and, um, recruiting officers that fit our vision. Um, you know, we strive to build a highly capable, adaptive, skilled, professional work, workforce, prepared for modern challenges that we face. Um, and lastly, the sixth pillar, which I personally believe is a very important one, officer wellness and safety. Um, you know, we look to improve physical, mental and emotional health and the resources that an officer can get that, um, help from. Uh, we focus on resilience, stress management and peer support, and enhance safety practices, equipment and vehicle operations. Um, overall, the intended outcome here is increased trust and legitimacy with the community, reduce crime and victimization, enhance officer performance, safety and retention, and modern policing that reflects the community expectations and national standards. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Uh, one say, one thing I will say about this, when I came here in twenty-seventeen, um, Winuski Police Department had a reputation of doing all these things very well. And that's not just because of the police department, but that's also because of the community and the feedback the community gives to the police department. So, um, very proud that, you know, we kind of started this before it was a thing, uh, which is good. Uh, any questions on that before we get into some statistics?
Not a question, but I'd just like to reflect on conversations that you and I have had in the past as, as you've been trying to recruit officers when we haven't been fully staffed. And I don't think this dives too much into, uh, HR's legal world, but I know that it has been more challenging for you to recruit new officers because you want to make sure that you're recruiting officers who adhere to these six pillars. Um, so I just think that that's something important to note, that because of what this community wants, uh, you and your predecessors have made sure that you're not just putting bodies in an open slot, um, downstairs, that you're matching these pillars with who you're hiring downstairs.
Thank you.
Yeah, and the fact that the rest of the department then shoulders that burden of working more so that we can have the culture that this community wants is appreciated.
Thank you, uh, next slide. Uh, so here's kind of a high-level overview, um, calls for service, kind of a ten-thousand-foot view. Um, we saw a steady decrease from twen- FY twenty-one all the way down to FY twenty-four. Uh, FY twenty-five, we started to see a spike and as we continue into FY twenty-six, we're, um, projected to have, you know, a significant in- increase. We haven't seen this type of call volume since, um, you know, twenty-eighteen-ish. Um, so we're kind of in a belly here as we creep back up. Any questions on that? Next slide. Paul? Okay, um, so drilling down a little bit more, our top ten calls for service here. Um, just some differences from FY twenty-four. Um, you'll see our directed patrols and our field contacts are now in our top ten calls for service. Directed patrols was always in there, but it, it bumped up significantly. Um, but again, our field contacts is new to this, uh, top ten calls for service.
Who defines field contact?
So a field contact would get, um, initiated if we're making contact with somebody on, um, anything outside of a reactive call for service. So if we're, um, doing a foot patrol downtown or we're checking an area and we come in contact with somebody for a non-law enforcement issue, we would start what's called a field contact. So it's really just community engagement is what it is.
Okay.
Paul?
I'd also like to point out some, it could also be a suspicion of a crime also, if field contact, you know, somebody just in the parking garage at two o'clock in the morning, field contact. So, sorry.
No, it's okay, thank you. Um, so drilling down a little bit more on those, you know, we always talk about taking more tal- more time on calls for service. Um, and you can see these, we kind of highlight these every year, you know, welfare check, mental health call. Those can sometimes take hours and that's multiple officers that, you know, that are tied up on those calls. They can take hours, uh, larceny, motor vehicle thefts, assaults, burglaries. Again, those can take the initiating officer sometimes hours to work on. And then, um, that officer or even a detective assisted by the detective, those can even take days or, or weeks to put these, um, cases together. So we are spending a lot of time on these particular, uh, calls for service. Questions on that?
Justin, on the welfare and the mental health checks.
Yeah.
Um, is Howard Center going to those with you all or those ones that you're doing by yourself?
Yeah, we'll get into the community outreach portion of it, but oftentimes that is, um, a dual response and we'll show a statistic on that as well as the Howard Center. So they have their own recording system on how they track it, which I'll get into a little bit. But, um, welfare check, mental health calls are just some of the calls that they go on, on with us, yeah.
Can you also just differentiate an example or a couple examples of welfare check? And how that differentiates from the mental health?
Yeah, so a welfare check that would be different from a mental health call, um, oftentimes we'll get a call from AgeWell where somebody hasn't made contact with somebody that's receiving meals and we'll do some follow-up there. And if no, you know, we'll, we'll follow through with that. Or a family member out of state that calls and, you know, I haven't spoke to this person in three or four days, this is out of the ordinary, can you go check?
Okay. Is that, um, how often do you kind of see any relationship between the numbers? We are experiencing Winuski to our neighboring communities, I mean, each community is distinct and has distinct needs, but I'm curious if there are similarities or trends?
I think so, and I think a lot of that is because we're so closely connected, we're seeing the same people as they go around. And we're gonna, I'm gonna get into that a little bit on the community outreach data side of things as far as how they're tracking their calls, um, yeah.
Hopeful, thank you.
Um, next, Paul. Okay, this is the part I'm excited about. I made some notes, so bear with me. When I presented the FY '25 budget in January of FY '24, we were in a very much transitional period. I was the interim chief at the time. We were still working towards our pre-pandemic level of policing. And also embracing new thoughts around police reform and everything that was going on there. Our goal, or one of my goals, was to really engage the community on, you know, what they wanted to see from the police department. And what kind of services that they wanted to see and what we could offer. So we even labeled it a re-engagement kind of process that we did. We did that in certain ways. Public safety meetings. We really looked at the survey that was provided when they did the hiring process for the chief of police. We'd had the, again, the public safety meetings. And then just a lot of phone calls and a lot of interaction with people in the city as far as, you know, what they wanted to see. The outcome really boiled down to one thing, and that was visibility. People really wanted to see us more in the community in the way of enforcing our traffic safety laws. In the way of directed patrols and in the way of foot patrols. That was the overwhelming message that we got. That was step one, was taking the data in, right? Next slide. Step two was actually doing it. So our leadership team, the lieutenants, the sergeants, they really, you know, bought into this community style of policing. Let's try to be proactive with these certain things, let's be more visible. Again, super fortunate, they bought into it. And then ultimately our patrol division bought into it. I can't say enough about, you know, the crew that we have downstairs to be able to buy into this philosophy on proactive policing. It's not like we could transition from a reactive police department to a proactive police department. We still had those reactive calls for service. We just added to that with a proactive approach. And I think that's a big part of the spike that you saw in 2025 and going into 2026. As our officers are actually doing a lot more work, we're just doing more on the proactive side. So I'm really excited about that. As you can see, our traffic enforcement increased by 10%. Our foot patrol increased by 70%. Field contacts increased by 180, 100, yeah. 168% and our directed patrols were increased by 250%. So again, that's all effort from your police officers, I can't say enough about that. Next slide. Here's what I'm excited about. It worked. Our noise complaints are down 14%. This is FY '24 to FY '25, so a very small sample size, but again.
For that one party that was across the river, anyway?
Yeah. Our noise complaints down 14%, larceny is down 20%. Assaults down 37%. Vandalism's down 42% and our burglaries are down 44%. So, you know, this is really, to me, this is community policing in a nutshell. We always talk about it, we always say we do it, but to my knowledge, this is the first time that we intentionally went out. Got feedback from the community, got the officers to buy into it, applied it. And then took the data out and looked at it and see what it did. And it really, it really worked. So again, super excited about it and hopefully we can continue this trend. Questions on that?
I know that I've seen more of the foot patrols when I like do my early bus run to work. Like, ah! Y'all are out here.
Yeah, we're out there, we're trying.
Seeing some of it.
Good, good. Next slide, Paul. So drilling down a little bit more on kind of how we're analyzing this approach. As of right now, we work, our officers work 10-hour shifts for a lot of different reasons. One, coverage, two, officer wellness. So because of that 10-hour day schedule, we have one inherent day that makes us heavy, so to speak. As of right now, that day is Wednesday. So as we break down our data as far as reactive calls for service. We see on our heaviest day of week, when we have the most officers on the street. It's kind of our slowest day of the week. So again, this data is a little bit new and, you know, Sunday's there too as far as low call volume. But I do think it's interesting to see, and we're gonna work on this a little bit more as far as getting the most out of the coverage that we have. Is that, you know, on, on a day we, in theory, have the most officers on the road, we have the least amount of reactive calls for service.
Why do you think, why do you think Wednesday would be a lower call volume day?
Well, I don't know. So I think in order to really kind of tease this information out is if we can come up with a schedule that would put another day of the week as our heavy day. Wednesday just happens to be our heavy day right now, so this was easy to see the difference, so.
Is that, do you know if that, I know this data analysis is maybe newer?
It's new, yeah.
Okay, so you wouldn't have at least any year-over-year comparison?
Correct.
Okay, great.
But our, our theory that we still need to prove out though, our theory is that it's because we're more visible that day.
Right, that's kind of, that's kind of what we're getting at. As far as really, really looking at how do we get the most out of, out of the people that we have? And, you know, is our proactive approach working like we saw in the initial data? You know, we teased it out a little bit more in this as far as, alright, well, if we're visible, the day that we have the most officers on. Or the, the day of the week that we have the most officers on and we're the most visible. As of right now, it looks like that's our slowest day for reactive calls for service. Hopefully we'll find more on that.
Interesting.
Is a 10-hour workday industry standard?
So typically there's three. There's eight-hour, 10-hour and 12-hour shifts. Everything that we've seen as far as officer wellness really points to the 10-hour shift.
So it's four 10s.
Four 10s.
Eight eighths, four eighths, five eighths.
There's issues, obviously, with, with, with every schedule. The eight-hour shift schedule, an issue with that is a quick turnover on your days off. Your days off always rotate, things like that.
Midnight's on two days off.
Right.
You get one day off.
You really get one day off. You know, on the flip side, you know, the 12-hour day, some people commute. Your 12-hour day, if you're held over or, you know, just with your commute, really turns into like a 14-hour day. And it's, it's pretty challenging.
So 10's kind of the preferable place.
Seem to be kind of the sweet spot. Alright, any questions on that before we transition out of data points? Paul? So this is the first year of, the first full year of the new DLO position. Officer Almagala's first year. Thanks to her hard work, the program continues to be, you know, a really big success. We get a lot of great feedback on not just the position, but her in particular and how she approaches the position and, and her role up there. Paul? So a message from her, as the district liaison officer, I ensure daily safety and security of the Winuski School District. I work closely with school administrators, staff, students and families to address concerns, provide guidance and respond to incidents. I also oversee safety drills to ensure preparedness and compliance with district protocols. Through communication, collaboration, we maintain a secure and supportive learning environment across the district. Again, can't say enough about how she approaches that, that position and the connections that she's made up there. Super lucky to have her. Paul? So transitioning a little bit to the community outreach team. They still continue to be a very valuable asset for us. Their calls for service this year were down to 292 from 325 the year before. This is a little bit hard to read. I don't know if what you're seeing is a little bit better. They, they're changing the way that they're collecting their data, which I think is very important. So, counselor, to kind of get back to what you were talking about, I don't necessarily know if this is a reduction in calls for service for them. Or just how they're documenting their calls for service. So the system has changed from last year to this year. What we're seeing in this slide is just a sample of FY '26, the, the first quarter. So I do think we'll get some, some more consistent numbers to work off in, in than we had in the past. And again, you know, they're spending more, as we are, they're spending a lot more time on each individual call for service, right? Like these calls that they're going on are very complex. You know, speaking with people that are unhoused, have substance abuse disorder, have, you know, severe mental health crises. So the calls that they're going to are not solved in a half hour.
Sometimes my understanding is that they are providing the service because there's nowhere else for them to go at that moment. So they're helping them through a rough patch at sometimes.
So we accounted for, Winuski accounted for 10% of the overall call volume. That's down a little bit too, obviously with the, with the number from 14% the previous year. But again, I do think that a portion of that could be just how they're tracking their calls for service. Paul? So in FY '26, there was a new funding model implemented for community outreach driven by funding changes by the Department of Mental Health. Winuski's contribution was estimated to go from just over 18,000 to about 60,000. The cost came in around 41,000. FY '27 budget contains 50,000 for community outreach contribution. That could fluctuate a little bit based on staffing levels, benefit costs and a grant from the Department of Mental Health.
When would we have numbers, firm numbers?
Let's see, I think for benefits, they joked that it would be the end of next fiscal year. For, for the grant, it would be the legislative session most likely. Staffing levels is really dependent on conversations with the other member municipalities. So a couple of them said, we're, in order for us to make the case for adding staffing, we need to see more of you. We need to see you in our departments more often so that we're using you more, so that we can see the benefits more. I don't know that that's a problem specifically that we have. I think we would see the benefit of adding staff so that there's more hours. But without all the members being bought into that, we can't afford that on our own. So if that conversation goes quickly, if they can make that change quickly, then maybe they would be ready to add staff. And then that would be a different conversation then.
Okay.
Any more questions on that before I pass it over to Officer Jackson? Great. Paul?
So, Winuski Police Department success stories. Officers responded to a road rage incident that resulted in an aggravated assault and maiming charges. Officers provided immediate support to the victim and members of rescue, and with members of rescue. The initial outlook was that the victim was going to lose sight in both eyes and potentially his eyes. As of today, the victim has gone through three surgeries and has regained vision in one eye to 2020. They are planning on three more surgeries in hopes to make improvements on the other eye. Officers worked with witnesses, collected footage from area video cameras, conducted search warrants and ultimately identified and arrested the offender.
If I can just jump in real quick right there. I just want to point out that Officer Jackson was the first officer that got there that night. So thanks to her.
I have a second.
Thanks to her, we're super, super excited about this outcome based on what we had originally thought.
I just want to ask a question and, sorry if it is uncomfortable with you being right there, but when I heard about this story, I just immediately, well, there are a lot of things that went through my mind, but one being just the emotional outcome for the officer and kind of what, you know, that's, this is quite extreme what happened, right? Like not your average call that you all receive day-to-day. Earlier we spoke about the pillar about mental, um, mental health and physical health. What are our policies or what's available to officers when they experience something traumatic like this?
Yeah, that's a good question. So we have a contract right now with what's called the, the center, the Vermont Center for Responder Wellness. And they provide support services, not just in an emergency like a traumatic incident like right off the bat. They'll literally come to the station or go to the hospital or, or go to an officer's house right off the bat. But also provide follow-up services to that. Those are completely voluntary. Officers can, can contact them directly, we can contact them for officers. So right now, that's our biggest kind of support system on, on that side of stuff.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that similar to an employee assistance program?
It is, but it's specific for first responders.
Okay.
Thank you.
Winuski Police Department detective collaborated with an Essex police detective to identify and arrest an individual that had robbed a Winuski bank and an Essex bank. Winuski police collaborated with ATF to investigate and take into custody a Winuski resident that was planning on conducting a mass shooting. Winuski police assisted neighboring agencies on two different shooting incidents. And Winuski police were involved in over 12 high-level narcotics, firearms and human trafficking cases that involved multiple agencies.
Paul?
Several medical assists to include 13 successful narcane deployments by officers. De-escalation tactics used daily to avoid use-of-force situations. Use-of-force incidents are down 40% since 2019. Collaboration with the community outreach team connecting vulnerable residents with, with services and resources. Paul? Thank you. Community outreach events include coffee with a cop, Vermont Special Olympics, block party barbecues, the Junior Miler's Running Club, Senior Citizen Appreciation Day and Operation Fire Cuts, which Ellie talked about earlier.
Ellie's running in that photo right there.
Yeah, the outreach events are great and I think I've talked with you multiple times about how I'd love for you all to be able to do more of those. Do you think, now that you're almost again full staff, you might be able to plan and do more outreach events? Or is kind of this list here what you think you're capable of doing at the moment?
I would like to say yes. I would like to say yes. We'd like to do more. I'm gonna get into it a little bit later on. I do worry a little bit about sustainability with the officers that we have. Again, we're super excited about what we saw with that community policing data. I'm worried a little bit about sustainability and officer burnout on it. Yeah, that's our goal. That's our goal.
In addition to that, is there any opportunity in, you know, with Main Street reopening and changes to Hood Street, Traffic Light, the Bridge? For any speed traps?
Yes, so you saw in our, our, our speed, our traffic enforcement is up 10%, which I honestly was hoping was gonna be a little bit higher. But we did put a really big push, as you saw, on directed patrols and foot patrol. So it's a little bit of a balancing act.
Sure, of course.
When we were at 16 or even 17 officers, at one point, you know, the SRO DLO position didn't come out of our original staffing level. So we really realistically had 17 officers, 16 on the road and there, one there. So now down at, at 15, we're stretched a little bit thin and that typically leaves just two officers on. When we had, when we had three on, that's where we really can get on that speed enforcement. And, and directed patrols. So again, finding ways with 15 to make all that work is, is So again, finding ways with fifteen to make all that work is is what we're trying to do. It's kind of why also we we pulled that that one slide as far as um, um, the busiest day of the week or the or the the least reactive day of the week, you know? What does it look like when we have more officers on the street? Just so we can get that data to you as far as at some point, you know, when we do want to try to get back to sixteen, we have that data to show that I think it is beneficial to get there based on what we've seen.
Okay.
All right, keep in mind the fif- the fifteen includes the district liaison officer. Whereas before seventeen was, yeah.
Included that, that spot. And we also do um, have a grant that we get every year through the Vermont Highway Safety Program. So when we do have uh, officers that are interested in getting overtime, they can go out and specifically do traffic enforcement, and that gets reimbursed by a by a national grant.
Oh, all right. I don't think I remember that. That's great.
Questions on that?
Can I be trained to do that?
Please, yes, please. Uh, Paul? Okay, um, so our accomplishments to date, um, the DLO, like we said, the DLO uh, started their first school year, that's going great. Um, continued efforts to recruit and hire employees to better represent the community we serve. We're anticipating two openings in the near future, I think maybe more. Um, also focus on retaining employees during a nationwide police safety, public safety staffing shortage. Again, that's not specific to us, the fire chief hit on that as well. It's it's a nationwide thing, and it's really police, fire, and and EMS. Um, but happy to report as of right now, we are full staff. We do have one person going to the academy in um, in January, and that will will put us full staff. Um, as you know, we've talked about this before, it'll really be close to July before we see that person uh, on the road and inactive, but uh, looking forward to that. And um, as of right now, our staff consists of thirty percent of our employees that identify as female, working toward our goal of thirty by thirty. I don't know if anyone or if you're all aware of that program, but it's a nationwide initiative that um, all law enforcement agencies are really trying to get to, which is thirty percent of your staff identify as female by the year twenty thirty. Um, again, right now, we're at thirty percent, the national average is fourteen. So we feel good about that and hope to continue um, that trend. Moving down the list, we continue professional development of both exempt and non-exempt management positions to plan for retirements and future promotions. We had one lieutenant attended a mid-management training at Ro- Roger Williams University. Again, that's a, that's a great training. Um, it's just a matter of having the staffing to s- to backfill to get um, people to to uh, to these good trainings. Um, another lieutenant attended um, an internal affairs uh, training that was put on by the FBI. And um, one of our officers attended trainings to work towards becoming a detective. So again, professional development there. Shifting gears a little bit, um, we got our cruiser cameras installed. They're not quite operational yet, but we did get those installed to complement our body cameras to continue our path of transparency. We adopted the state model, um, fair and impartial policing policy. That um, model was updated in twenty twenty five. Uh, the original policy was from twenty seventeen. A lot of work at the state level went into developing this policy. Um, we're, we're excited about the policy, and not only are we excited about the new policy, the policy that's in effect today, the state policy, was really built off what they called the Winuski model. And that's the policy that we had in twenty seventeen. So kudos to everybody that was involved in that twenty seventeen policy. And I think this one is just as good and um, also offers the protection to our agency um, as well as um, the people that we serve. So excited to be part of that. Again, shifting gears, um, we sent out requests for proposals on the police department building. Um, Redlow Construction completed a design for a renovation project. We're gonna talk about that a little bit more. Um, and then this, this next bullet here really goes back to what we talked about in the beginning as far as implementing community members' feedback in regards to expectation and police services. Um, again, those requests were speed enforcement, direct patrols, foot patrols, and and community engagement meetings. Um, and as you saw, the short-term data we collected on that was very positive. And the Winuski Police Department was selected to participate in a statewide initiative focused on the sequential intercept model. And I'm not gonna do it justice, but a brief um, a brief kind of rundown on that. It's a nationwide concept where we're trying to identify areas in the total um, criminal justice system, so to speak, as to where we can insert services to people. And those different, they they came up with really five points in this overall um, criminal justice ecosystem, so to speak. Point one, beginning no police contact, having a a point there where you can insert services. All the way at the end, post-judicial um, finalization, a service there and and everywhere in between. Very new, but we're super excited to be part of those conversations. Question on that?
I am curious, who else is, um, so is that, that sounds like it's a national work group?
So it's a statewide work group.
Okay.
Um, it's a national um, initiative concept.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I I don't know where it started first. Um, we, Vermont got on board with it this year, and they held multiple meetings around the state and um, involved everybody from the entire system, from police, judges, prosecutors, um, public defenders, mental health support, the hospital, Howard Center, everybody that um, these issues touch. And where we can insert service, services by identifying where we don't.
You anticipated a follow-up question, so well done.
Um, so would kind of how Winuski's currently using the community outreach team? Like if there are certain calls that that team has sent ahead, would that be an example of that model of trying to insert services? Or am I misunderstanding?
Yeah, and some of the stuff we already do do, yes, I think that's a great example. Another example would be the um, Community Justice Program that we're that we're working with, and it's just different portions of this kind of process where you insert the 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 service.
So it's seeing kind of what we currently have, and then like you said, finding the gaps where we don't.
Yeah, and unfortunately, there's some big gaps that we need to fill there. But step one is identifying them, so this is good.
Yeah.
Uh, Paul? So looking ahead, um, we want to continue to support the DLO position. That, again, that's doing great. Um, we want to recruit and retrain employees during, again, a staffing shortage. Um, the um, the the officer that we have going to the academy now um, was really one of very few applicants that we have. We just got lucky that we got a really good applicant. So um, we hope to be able to to um, get more applications in, but it it's a, it's a shortage. Um, we want to continue to train our officers above the current acceptable standard, focus on mental health, de-escalation, and career development. That's something that we've always been really good at, even when we have been low staffing, is really not just accepting the baseline trainings that are required. Um, we we want our officers trained and and trained well. Moving down the list, we want to continue to engage stakeholders on our community policing model. Again, we're encouraged by the results that we've seen. Um, our goal is to continue to evaluate that and kind of mold our strategies to fit that. Prioritize traffic enforcement, criminal interdiction, police visibility. Um, and lastly, for our goal for this year is to update all of our policies. Um, are, we haven't done a full policy update since twenty nineteen, um, which doesn't sound like that long ago, but it it kind of is. It's, you know, six years ago. And we want to make sure our policies are in line with what we're doing. As we shift and evolve, um, sometimes those policies need to change and change for good reason. And we just want to, again, make sure our policies are reflective with best practices and what we, um, and what we're doing. Questions on that? Uh, Paul? So what's included, um, FY twenty seven proposal, uh, the general fund FY twenty seven budget is uh, three point three there. Uh, you'll see a little bit of a decrease from FY twenty six. Parking um, enforcement is being moved to the parking fund. This was approximate approximately one hundred and fifty nine thousand for FY twenty seven. So that reduction is a hundred and thirty three thousand and some change in salary and benefits, twenty four thousand in professional services, and two thousand in general supplies. Um, and then the rest of our budget is just um, contractually required salary benefits. Everything else outside of the salary and benefits is uh, level funded. Paul? So the roll-up, if you will, again, you can see that reflective number there, FY twenty six budget, three point four. Um, and then FY twenty seven is three point three, and that, again, that is the uh, the parking fund. Paul? Um, all right, developing issues. Um, so we're currently at fifteen officers for dispatchers, we're fully staffed. We are anticipating two retirements during FY twenty seven calendar year, maybe more. Um, it currently takes twelve to eighteen months to interview, hire, and train a new officer. Um, again, I bring that up because I do worry about sustainability with the even at full staffed, um, with the proactive approach that we want to try to take. Um, again, I talked about the the sergeant position that was vacated in twenty uh, FY twenty four. Um, our goal is to fill that in FY twenty seven. Um, but we really need to get officers trained um, and ready to take, take that on. Oftentimes in law enforcement, we do a little things a little bit backwards when it comes to training, right? We'll give somebody a promotion um, just based on on need to fill that, and then we train them to take that promotion. We want to get ahead of that and flop that and really get multiple officers trained up and then go through a promotional process. So on the heels of that, preparing our next generation of leaders is important. Um, we want to send our officers to command staff training, mid-level management training, and ultimately executive development training.
Uh, can I, can I ask a couple of questions on that just to try and um, make sure I'm conceptualizing this correctly? So one of the things that Elaine brought up in their presentation was kind of why a sixteenth officer would be helpful is to kind of backfill things like these retirements. Is, do we not post positions if we know they're going to be open?
No, that's a very good question. As of right now, we don't post an interview until that separation has happened.
Okay, is that kind of is best practice or standard procedure?
Um, it's standard procedure. I don't know if it's best practice, and we've talked about that at the leadership level, and um, I think the you even brought that up at a, at a leadership meeting as far as being able to post these positions and and get people on board, knowing that that vacancy is gonna happen. And I think that's part of a a bigger conversation, and I appreciate you looking at that and and seeing what we can do about that.
Yeah, 'cause I I was thinking too, when do we necessarily, is paying them part of them going to the police academy? Like, when do we start pay them?
We do.
Okay, so.
So there potentially could be some overlap there and how we get around that.
And that would be, okay.
Get around that overlap.
All right.
Just another, another point on that, so we're trying to get to a point where we have a pool of applicants. The unfortunate thing is, is everybody else is in a shortage. So if you don't get hired and another agency calls, you're obviously gonna leave our pool to go take a job.
Yeah.
So that's another thing that we do fight with.
Gotcha, so, yeah, kind of those two things. Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
That's a very good question, I appreciate you bringing it up. Anything else on staffing? So some equipment repair, looking ahead, um, down the road, uh, we're looking at repairing or replacing um, our radio system, and again, this is is looking ahead, this is a, is a larger repair. I just want to put it on on your radar. That includes our portable raider, radios, our mobile radios, and our base radios. And um, also replacing the uh, speed data collection trailer. I know we get a lot of calls for that, um, and.
I think I actually had a question last night about it.
It has been on the want list to to get it going. We thought we were gonna be able to repair it. Um, it doesn't look like that's gonna be the case, so we did get some quotes rolling in this week on what a new one would look like, not only for our purposes, but I know that Public Works likes to use that data as well. Um, there's a lot of data that 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 captures, so we want to try to, we want to try to do that. Paul?
Just pausing.
Yep.
For this, looking ahead, does that mean you're looking ahead in FY twenty eight? Is that looking ahead in FY twenty seven?
FY twenty eight.
Okay.
FY twenty eight, yeah. Community issues, mental health calls, again, continue to be very challenging, not just for um, the people that that the person that's presenting, but also our our officers, both oftentimes, you know, everybody kind of walks away feeling discouraged as as far as what we have for options out there. It continues to be a challenge. Our narcotics-related cases continue to climb and become more complex. Um, we're seeing more instances, and again, we saw this last budget too, with these cases having to do with also human trafficking, um, which is connected to a larger, more organized crime um, component, not just specific to Vermont. You know, we're seeing a lot of multi-state movement when it comes to that kind of stuff. Um, and then our, a big worry that we started to see in the last year and a half, two years is, um, you know, youth being dragged kind of into that, into that world, is something we're really keeping an eye on. You know, our unhoused population, we've all had conversations, I think most of, most of you have had offline conversations with with me on this. Um, it's hard to collect, I always get the question on, you know, numbers, it's really hard to collect the data on that. But it seems to be climbing, uh, and again, I I think it's hard to get data on that just because, for one, they're in areas where oftentimes we don't know they're there, like the parks and stuff like that. And I do think there's a lot of movement between our surrounding municipalities with our unhoused population. So sleeping numbers, so to speak, are hard to, are hard to get, um, but it does seem like it's climbing. We are starting to see, the more we are out there and we have these foot patrols and we have these um, direct patrols and this engagement and the engagement with community outreach is good, but we are seeing people that are just more resistant to the services that are out there. Um, and that's a very complex issue, right? With somebody that's, you know, fighting substance abuse disorder or in in crisis might not necessarily recognize that they they need the support. And getting someone the support that might not necessarily need it or or think they need it or or want it is is difficult. So that's, that's frustrating too. Um, and this is a little bit new, is we're starting to see increase in violence and threatening behavior amongst our unhoused individuals. So when we are making these connections with people, they are being very honest about um, the violence and the threats and kind of the the crime um, that they're seeing within, you know, the unhoused areas. So that's a concern.
Do, I don't know if this is feedback that you'd be getting from folks, but it, do you, does it seem like some of that resistance might be because folks have tried services and either, yeah, and then they feel failed by them?
Yeah, I think so in certain circumstances, yeah. And look, it's not easy, it it really. And look, it's not easy, it it really isn't, and it's, when you are looking for services, from what we've seen at the street level, it's a very intimidating and long process to get those services. And it requires a ton of follow-up and a ton of work on the person's end that's in this position. So to get somebody to completely go through that is is a task. So I I do think that that's part of it, and.
Like having some lower level, easier to access services that then could make people stable enough to?
Make a more, yes.
Yeah.
So I I I think the the introduction of the new program with the with the walking mental health clinic, so to speak, I think is a step in the right direction. So to your point, I think that's part of it, and I do think there's a, you know, a part of it is somebody being in such a position where they don't want or recognize that they need services, and how do we as a society, you know, get them services that we we know that they need, but they don't recognize it at the time, and that's a very tricky part too. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions on that? Okay, so building improvements, the condition of the building continues to get worse. We're excited to begin the planning phase of the renovation, Paul. So a little bit more on on that. I know it's going to get talked about a little bit in the capital budget, but just kind of wanted to give everybody an overview of the current building. The police department moved into the current space in nineteen seventy five, and the building has been relatively, for the most part, unchanged since moving into that space. Paul? So the condition of the building is adding pressure to an already stressed recruiting and retention campaign. The the building by far is in worse condition than any other police station that we're kind of competing against as far as recruiting and and retaining officers for. So that's a, that's a big added stress on that portion of it.
He's not exaggerating even a little bit. His predecessor sent me to the Colchester Department as one that was like not very fancy, and I was like, mm, this is pretty fancy.
And just a little bit more on that, so at least three municipalities' police stations have been built prior or after ours was, and have already gone through renovations, so we're we're a little bit behind there. But, yeah, Paul? So outside of recruiting and the retention portion of it, you know, there are some health concerns that we've had there based on some incidents that have happened downstairs, so environmental testing was conducted in October of twenty twenty three. Paul? Main concerns that triggered the testing were air quality due to visible mold on the HVAC HVAC system and equipment that also had kind of led into the ceiling material there. About once every two months, I go through with a wet cloth and I have to physically wipe all the diffusers down in the building to get the, to get the mold off them. Paul? And another concern was the asbestos, potential asbestos in the building based on the building materials that were used at the time of construction. Particularly the floor, because that is breaking apart. Paul? So the test was conducted by KD Associates Incorporated, an environmental consulting and contracting company out of South Burlington. Paul? And the results of the test confirmed that the sheet vinyl flooring that is breaking apart in the police department tested positive for crystal, chrysotile? I'm not exactly sure how to pronounce it, but I know it's bad, which is a white asbestos. Not only is it in the flooring, actually thirty-five percent of the flooring material is made up of that substance. That substance has been banned by the EPA for its links to significant health issues. I think one thing to note, looking at the slides that we went through, one of the big concerns with that material is when it gets airborne, and it gets airborne when the material starts to break down. And in all these slides, you can see where the the flooring is breaking down literally underneath the, where people sit. So a big concern there. Paul? And our final concerns outside of the health concerns are, you know, just the overall poor design of the building, just contributing to cramped workspaces and work efficiency issues. And the the really the lack of the ADA compliance in in the building, which is is not good for a lot of reasons, but a lot of reasons, a a big reason of that is it really limits on who we can offer positions to in the in the world of dispatching and that and that kind of stuff, so it limits us, limits us there. Again, we have designs and estimates for the renovation, and I know that are going to be talked about in the capital budget presentation.
So that was going to be my question, is are we going to get to see some of the design suggestions next, next time?
Do we have the design, are they putting the design models up or just the budget? Okay.
Is there a toilet in the holding cell?
There is.
Yay!
There is, yes. Paul, and I think that's a thank you. And I I forgot to mention this at the beginning of the presentation, you know, as stressful as budget season is for us on our end, we know it's equally as stressful for you folks, and sometimes we often, we often forget about that. So I thank you for your work and your dedication to the city and making sure that we can provide the best services that we can provide on our end. So thank you for all your support, and and we hope that support continues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We don't have to make a big slide though, so. All right, any questions, further questions from councilors on what we just heard? Members of the public? All right, we will move to our next item, item E, Consider Airport Commissioner Appointment. It's my name, so I'll talk about this. So the Leahy Burlington International Airport maintains a commission that is it's late in the night, but we we get to appoint one person to that commission. There's there's members from other cities or towns on there, as well as folks from the airport. Our current commissioner, Connor Daly, we realized that his term actually ended in June. They were completing the remainder of the term that was held by then-councillor Oakley, now Deputy Mayor Oakley. So due to a system error, none of us really caught that that issue. Connor has attended multiple meetings as our commissioner during the period in which his term had actually expired. So what we need to do today is essentially, I keep using the word ratify, but I don't know if that's really what it is, but ratify the fact that he was a commissioner, and then also lay out our process of establishing a new commissioner who would start in in January. For some background on that, the commissioner to the airport historically has been a member of city council or staff. Just because of the, obviously, it's quite a hot button issue, there's a few hot button issues up at the airport for our city. So we've always wanted to kind of make sure that somebody who is well-informed with council priorities and thinking and and community priorities was able to sit on that commission. The time that they meet is the first Wednesday of every month at four P M. So it has been difficult at times for a member of council to sit on there or for a member of staff. So when that has occurred, we have, you know, similar to our other commissions, asked for for members of the public to apply, and then, you know, we we look at those applications, fit those applications, and and do interviews and and hire somebody. So per our precedent, I think what I would first be asking of council is if there's any member of council who would like to be on the Leahy Burlington International Airport Commission.
I would.
Al, what, thank you, anybody else?
Just thinking about timing.
Yes.
So just being mindful of not knowing what town meeting day may look like. And just having the cognizance of a potential changing in roles after the town meeting date. And if this would simply just be something we agreed to through the March first, March, the first meeting of March, thank you, got there, and then reevaluating after town meeting day. So it would take, essentially take care of three meetings, and then pending the results of town meeting day, we could reevaluate the need to, you know, have revisit the conversation.
Yeah, totally, and I think if we, if nobody else wants to serve and I were to be Al, depending on what happens in March, we would have have to reevaluate possibly.
Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, I guess we could lay it out with the person who's serving until the next election, at what point we review all the commissions anyway.
Yeah, that's true.
Sorry, here we go.
I was just gonna say.
Would you like a go at it before you head out?
No, thank you. I was gonna say, if it's, if there, if, I don't know, could always slap interim in front of it. If that would make things clearer that it was, would be reevaluated, I don't know, that's my only suggestion.
Um, yeah, fair, it doesn't, it's fine either way.
Yeah, but I think it's part of the, like, the document when we do the commission assignments anyway.
It is, yeah, yeah. Um, Elsie, do you have interest?
I'm not at this time.
Fair enough.
And the only reason why, if there wasn't another councillor that had interest, I would say that I'd be willing to step into it again for the remainder of, I think it's up again in June, is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, July, but yeah.
June, July, through the end of the fiscal year. Just to mitigate the the workload that it takes to go out to solicit interest, do interviews during a time where we're already pretty loaded with budget meetings, and just to avoid that as one additional agenda item in the in the near future, but thankfully, it sounds like I may not be able to do that.
Looks like we've got a new ticker. Okay, so that all makes sense to me, I'm just looking at our calendar. So their next meeting would be January. Okay, any further discussion?
Is this on for discussion approval? It looks like it is.
That should be, yeah, okay.
So I would nominate.
Just one second, any comments from the public? Anybody online? All right, go ahead.
I would nominate, I would like to nominate councillor Turcos to fill the airport commissioner role for January through the first meeting of March. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wonderful. Congratulations. I will let current commissioner Daly know, and I will also let the airport commission know that they will have a new face in January.
Thank you.
Awesome. All right, and that brings our regular items to a conclusion. We will now be moving into an executive session, the reason being precedent one V S A three one three three, the appointment or employment evaluation of a public officer or employee. I would like to invite obviously all members of council, and then the city manager, anybody else? No, and the city manager into this. We will only discuss the topics of appointment or employment or evaluation of a public officer or employee. During this time, we will not discuss anything else. Do I have a motion?
And there will not be any action after?
Oh, and there will not be any action after we conduct this conversation.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Do we want to move into another room so Steve can break down?
Yeah, that's true.